Welcome to the Livonia City Council. The Honorable Councilmember Scott Barr will lead us in a prayer. Would you all rise?
Lord, we thank you for this opportunity again to be here tonight. We thank you for our freedom, for our land, for our city. We so often talk here of the many blessings that we have. And the city that we all know and love, the people that help it to run, the citizens that make it what it is, our first responders that are always out there watching for us. Lord, we also know that we all go through various seasons of life. We understand that our mayor is going through a tough one right now from a health perspective. We would pray for him, pray that he would feel your nearness, pray that he would be, find the healing quickly that he's looking for. And we just pray that you would give us wisdom tonight as we endeavor to cover the affairs of the city. And we pray all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Barr. We'd like to welcome you to the 1,873rd regular meeting of yours Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at our next regular meeting, which will be scheduled on Monday, June the 3rd of this year. Will the clerk please take the role? Before you do, Councilman Meakin is at a Mapers event or concert, excuse me, conference concert. I don't think they sing there, but anyhow. And then Brandon Kritzman will not be able to join us with a work commitment tonight. So if you take the role.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Vice President Jolly?
Present.
President Toy?
Here. Now, if we could have the presentation of the 1,870th regular meeting of the City Council held on Monday, May the 8th of this year.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Councilwoman White, supported by Councilwoman McIntyre. Would the clerk take the role on the minutes, please?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. Council, we are under council personal announcements, tributes, and recognitions. Does anyone have anything? Yes, Councilman Barr.
Yeah, it's my privilege to wish my wife a very happy 204-month anniversary, otherwise known as 17 years. So I love her very much, and May is a busy month for our family with three birthdays and an anniversary, but this rounds it out for us, so.
Congratulations. That's great. Yes. Oh, go right ahead, Vice President.
Madam President, no announcement, but I would like to make a motion to approve, well, I can't even, we need to make a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, Madam President, but I can't make that motion.
Sure.
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting last week.
Support.
Supported. Okay, we have, that was made, you got all that? Okay. And we, just so the audience knows, we had to have a special meeting to address a concern on a carnival that had some dates and that were not in line with what they needed, so we called a special meeting of the council, and that's what we're voting on right now to approve those minutes. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Present.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much for the reminder. Okay. Again, we're under announcements and tributes. Anyone else before we get to anything? Yes, Councilwoman McIntyre.
I wanted to congratulate two of our outstanding arts organizations in Livonia for great events this weekend. The Livonia Symphony Orchestra held their annual garden party on Saturday, and it was a sold-out crowd and just a lovely event with some musicians playing and showcasing all the hard work and many things that the Livonia Symphony has to offer. And then yesterday, Sunday, was the Livonia Civic Chorus's Spring Concert. And it was another, I think they said this is their 53rd year. It was another fantastic performance. Councilman Barr was able to join me there. I know, President Toy, you stopped by but had a commitment at Madonna University, but it was just outstanding, and we're so fortunate to have our own civic chorus, our own symphony orchestra, our own youth orchestra, all within our community. So congratulations to those two fine groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Let me share with you a few events. Since Mayor Wright has been a little bit incapacitated there, I kind of stepped in on a few things. And we had a fun event at St. Balrix. That was where we get into shaving heads, and it's a fundraiser, and happened at Colada's yesterday, and they did just a super job. It was very fun, and it, what it does is, and the purpose of the organization is to conquer childhood cancers. And so it's very, very moving to see what this organization does and how they all work together to accomplish great things, including taking off gentlemen's hair and others' hair. There was a woman that had all her hair cut as well. We moved on from there, went to Madonna University, as Councilwoman McIntyre said, and I know Clerk Nash was involved with the senior day as well and was unable to attend, which was great. And so my apologies because I couldn't make any of those, and yet Madonna University is going to do a brand-new welcome center for the Phoenician nuns that date back many years, and it's going to be absolutely gorgeous on their campus. And they did a terrific job yesterday of explaining to us their new building and having a groundbreaking, and had a Polish dinner afterwards. That was just outstanding. So a lot happening in our community, as you heard some of the other council members mention, special events, and we're just so proud that so many have gotten involved. And I want to give a shout-out to Bob Hardey's. He sent us all a book. I don't know who got it, but I happened to get one in my mailbox, Best Secret, Best Kept Secrets of Livonia Parks. And this is like number four, isn't it, in his edition or whatever? He does a very great job, and anybody that's into history of Livonia or any of the rest, this is just fascinating. He has some really nice quotes in there, so those of you that need to do papers for school, et cetera, please look into that. They're only $5. I shouldn't be doing advertising, should I? Yeah, I should. Five bucks, and so we're real pleased that Bob has taken the time to do that. Okay, Council, without further ado, we each have certificates for some very, very special people that are in the audience tonight. Couple of your parents called me about a month or two ago, and Mrs. Preby to my left, she helped us with this, and we are going to give you certificates. And I mentioned to your coaches how we probably could line up and be pretty efficient on this so that we can get you all through and you can get home, because I know you probably want to do your homework. So if Coach Rana Henry would approach the podium, and then the women that played Rhonda, is that what I said?
You said Rhonda.
Oh, sorry.
No, I just want, no, I just want.
It's one of those, sorry.
No, it's okay.
So on behalf of the City of Livonia, Michigan, our sincere congratulations to you and the St. Michael's Girls Varsity, hold off one second, basketball team for winning the 2019 CYO Championship. We are so very proud of you and your achievement, and wish you much, much success in the future. And this is signed by our mayor and all of the seven council people, and we're so proud of you all. And if your parents or anyone that would like to take some photos, if you'd like to come up now before they start shaking hands, we'll get a picture. Anyone?
Thank you.
Don't be shy. Hold on, everybody, and then we'll get a nice photo, okay?
You can follow right along here if you want to.
They look so young to come up.
You should have gave it, yeah, I know we should have.
You're right. No, that's all right. They started.
You know what, we need, if we're going to be in this, we need to go up.
Okay.
Or, or, well, why don't, why don't?
Should we go out here, Kathleen?
Yeah, I think it's better if we go out there. Yeah, yeah, otherwise.
I guess we're coming out here.
I mean, if you don't want us in the picture, we can just, but otherwise, I just, because I just see all these girls.
We had rovers.
Didn't seem to believe in smarty nuts.
Rover.
Six people and didn't.
Good?
All right, now we're going to give you certificates.
Thanks, Caitlin.
You're right.
Because then we're just like, we're like floating at heights.
But then we're just, I know, like.
No, you're right. We're all good.
Okay, let's try this one more time. We're now going to present the certificates to you. Is there anything you'd like to say, Coach?
Just want to thank you for having us tonight. We really, we appreciate it.
Certainly, it's a special treat for us, too. Council, anyone? No? I was just telling them, when I played basketball for Bentley, Bentley High School, you know?
I heard.
Yeah. We had rovers. We had six women on the team, rather, and we weren't allowed to go past that halfway mark there.
Right.
So, because we might injure ourselves, you know how that goes.
I know. I saw you, you're probably a good boxer outer. I saw you boxing out right over here.
Always, yeah, well, I played field hockey, too. You're right. Okay. Was there any other comments? No? Okay. Taken away, Councilwoman White.
Haley Boman.
Congratulations, Haley. She wants to shake your hand.
Congratulations, Haley.
Congratulations.
Kennedy Blair.
Nice job. Nice job, Kennedy.
Way to go.
Sidney Bordan.
Lillian DeJong. Isabella DePaulis.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I bet you scooted right around.
All right.
Paige Eben.
Did we pronounce it correctly, Paige? And you can, oops. There you go. Thank you very much.
Kathleen Fay.
Congratulations. Nice job.
Anna Friar. Congratulations, Anna. Lauren Smiley. And I hate to embarrass her, but I know that her, I know that her grandparents are almost every single game, so anyway, there you go. Congratulations.
Grace, Grace, Grace Stephs.
Congratulations. Well done, Grace. Way to go. And Coach, if you'd like to come up, we'd like to present to you.
Congratulations, Coach. Great job. Nice job.
And thank you. Congratulations, Grace. Well, thank you very much, and much, much congratulations again. Now we're going to turn to, if you want to have a seat, we're going to turn back over, and we're going to bring, Brad, are you here, Coach? All right, there he is. And once again, on behalf of the City of Livonia, Michigan, our sincere congratulations to you and the St. Michael's Boys Varsity Basketball Team for winning the 2019 CYO Championship. We are proud of you and your achievements, and we wish all of them much success for the future. And Council Vice President Jolly will begin to read those.
I'll read the names, but before I read the names, I'll just say, I'm hoping some of you guys consider going to Catholic Central to help our basketball program. A little plug there, but.
We have two.
Good. Luke Karice.
I know, we'll have to work.
Nate Curtis.
Hey.
Michael Hegarty.
Patrick Henry.
Dominic Genser.
All right, then we have Spencer Lyons.
Tommy Marshall.
Andrew Nodge.
Dylan Senda.
And Chad Sims.
And I'm sorry, I have one more. I thought that was my last one. We have Patrick Vallali.
Congratulations.
And then some of you may play for the University of Michigan, it looks like, because you have gold and blue on. I just wonder, you know. Alrighty. Sorry, Kathleen, I know, Michigan State, right?
Oh, yeah, that's great.
That's great.
Big St. Michael fan.
That's right. That, too.
Looking forward to seeing some of those guys at Shamrocks and Arthur High School next year, so.
There you go. Great. All right, if you want to bring them up, Coach, and we'll get a picture of everyone and your parents that would like to come down, we'll be more than welcome. You want to go off?
Congratulations.
There you go, Coach.
Your hard work. Congratulations. You're still playing right now. Cross is going. There we go. I just.
I'm staying by next year. It'll look like I've been walking.
Nice going, sir.
Please give your name to Judy. We want to get your certificate, sir?
Yes.
Yes.
Do they have their names ready?
Okay, you guys ready? Ready, willing, enable? Thank you again. We are going to go into our regular meeting now. It's the green sheet, which is our agenda. And let's introduce our department heads this evening. To my left, we have Todd Zalinsik. He is our city engineer. To his right is Mark Terramina, our city planner. Then we also have Judy Preby, our legislative director, and they all do a great job for our city, and we appreciate it. And to our right is Paul Burnier. Paul's our city attorney. And to his left is Susan Nash, who is our city clerk, and they both do a fine job. And then our audience is Dave Varga, one of the mayor's top assistants and does a super job. Thank you, Dave, for all you do. Appreciate it. Okay. With all that, Council, we have new data on items 14 and 16, and now we will turn to audience communication. Anyone wishing to speak on the council, to the council, excuse me, of anything that wasn't on the green agenda, please approach now to the podium to my left or right. Give us your full name and address. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Council, City of Livonia. My name is Javion Johnson. I'm Chief of Staff for State Representative Jewell Jones. I just come to show our support for the community and give a few legislative updates from the state. I have them jotted down, so bear with me. First, general info. In 1999, Senator John McCain introduced legislation to designate the month of May as National Military Month. So for any service members here, we do show our love and appreciation for you. Also, the president has issued a proclamation to Congress to adopt a resolution calling for Americans to recognize and honor U.S. service members during this month, so thank him for that. In Lansing, there's a lot going on. As you can see, I'm dressed down. Earlier today, I was on the front lines at a press conference to fight for better insurance rates, so it's been a long day. But in Lansing, first, HB 4320 and HB 4321 abortion method ban bills amend Michigan's current prohibition on partial birth abortion to ban dilation and evacuation, commonly referred to as DNE, which is considered the safest and most common early second trimester abortion method. Physicians who perform a DNE will be charged with a felony punishable by up to two years in prison. Next, we have HB 321, which would update the sentencing guidelines to add the criminal penalty proposed in HB 4320, which I just read. Next on the list is HB 4045, which increases county reward for information leading to arrest and convictions. The bill increases the maximum allowable reward a county may offer for information leading to the arrest and conviction of someone who has committed a crime within the county or escaped from the county jail. Next, HB 4510 creates exceptions from elevator safety rules under certain circumstances. The bill requires the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs to grant exceptions and variations from certain elevator safety measures if the safety measure was not required at the time the elevator was constructed or at the time application, the application was made for an exception or variation.
Sir?
Yes.
Sir, I hate to interrupt you, but we only usually offer three minutes when you come in.
Oh, no problem at all.
No, you didn't know that, and that's fine. You've got about another 30 seconds, and I know you guys are doing a ton of work up there. We'd like to hear about each bill, but unfortunately, there's not that time. If you want to email us or, you know, whatever, we're happy to hear that. We're happy to hear what you've said so far.
I only had two more left, and I was.
Two more? Okay, if you can do it in 30 seconds, that would be great. Okay.
So it's just SB 155 requires liquid nicotine containers to be sold in child-resistant packaging. In HB 4227, a committee on Michigan's mining future, the mining creates a new act to establish a committee on Michigan's mining future, which is tasked with developing a list of recommendations on how to promote the mining and mineral industry within the state. So thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Feel free to contact our office if you need us. Thank you.
Certainly. Good luck to you. Yes, sir. Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Yes. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi there. My name is Megan Zipka. I'm a resident of Livonia. I did speak with Judy this morning on the phone regarding, I just wasn't sure if it got added to the agenda.
Yeah, sure, the block, or, yeah, you're at the end. You're our next item.
Then I can.
Yep, you can.
Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty. Great. Okay, anybody else before we leave that? Okay, seen no one. We have a communication from the Department of Finance dated April 26th. Madam Clerk, if you could receive and file those financial statements for the City of Livonia for the month ending March 31st of this year. Okay. Council, item 1 through 10 is listed on our consent agenda. These items have been deemed not to be controversial in nature. Would someone like to move that? Council Vice President Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to offer an approving resolution for the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Support.
Council Vice President Jolly has offered. Councilwoman White has supported. Seeing no one else, if you take the role, Madam Clerk, the vote.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. Council, we're under unfinished business. Number 11 is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Court of Ordinances. This petition was submitted by St. Jude Investment in request to vacate an existing public utility easement located on the southeast corner of Schoolcraft and Farmington Roads in the northwest section, quarter of the section 27. Was there direction on this?
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I'd like to offer the first reading at this point.
Thank you. Councilman Jolly has offered first reading. You've heard first reading. Item 12, then, if there's no comments on item 11, we're moving on to 12. So don't be shy, just raise your hand or whatever and come on up to the podium. Item 12 is also under unfinished business. This first reading was given by Councilman Kritzman on February 25th. Was there someone from the council that would like to give this second reading? Item 12.
Madam President?
Yes, please.
I'll offer a second reading.
Thank you very much. Councilman Jolly has offered second reading on the proposal. Is there any comment on item 12? Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman.
I appreciate Councilman Jolly offering second reading. I am not going to support it because I would like us to wait until we have all members of the council present for the second reading and the roll call vote.
Already?
Is that a motion to table? Yeah, I'm not sure if I can.
Did you want to?
Because if it is, I'll support that.
Okay, so Councilwoman McIntyre has made a motion to table until all members are present. Is that correct, all members, all seven? And Councilwoman White has supported that. Was there further discussion? So we will take the tabling first.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. So there's no need to address the next one. Is there any other comments on item 12 before we leave it? Okay. Yes, go right ahead.
I just want to explain, and I appreciate Mr. Bakke being here tonight, but when we are doing rezonings, especially ones like this where there's been significant comment, I prefer to wait until we have all members here. I just, I think it's, it's better, better government, if you will, so thank you.
Certainly. Thank you. Okay, item 13, then, Council, is a waiver petition from our planning commission submitted by Leo Solvi Building to develop a plan residential development under the single-family clustering option known as Compre Court, consisting of existing site condominium lots on properties located on the west side of Farmington Road before Norfolk Avenue and Eight Mile. This is in the northwest section, north quarter section, northeast quarter section of Section 4.
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I think based on what we just did, it would be appropriate to table this as well until next time.
Okay. Do I have support on the table?
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman White. Is there any other comments? Is there anyone from the audience?
I have, Madam President?
Yes.
I have a question.
Please.
Although now that I asked this question, it's probably relevant at this point, but I see Mr. Bakke out there. Mind if I call him to the podium for a second?
No, not at all. Please, go ahead.
Mr. Bakke, is there any problems that this causes you pushing this back?
I mean, not really.
I mean, obviously, you're always anxious to get going, but.
No, no, we, yeah, we're anxious to see it going, but we're moving forward with our engineering and everything else.
Okay.
Now, we know all the neighbors are satisfied, so it's.
Fine.
That's, you know, the motion of the council to have all the seven present. I mean, would it be the next meeting, I hope, so we can keep things moving? Okay.
As long as they're all here.
Yeah.
And Sam, the primary reason, I wanted to, I think everyone's in favor of this, but as you know, Mr. Kritzman is a resident architect, and while we all do due diligence on site plans and waiver and everything else, I, on this issue, would like to.
And then some of you may play for the University of Michigan, it looks like, because you have gold and blue on. I just wonder. All righty. Sorry Kathleen, I know. Michigan State, right?
Oh yeah, that's great.
That's great.
Big St. Michael fan.
That's right. That too.
Looking forward to seeing some of those guys at Shamrocks in our other high school next year.
There you go. Great. All right, if you want to bring them up, Coach, and we'll get a picture of everyone and their parents that would like to come down will be more than welcome. You want to go off?
Sure.
There's our coach. Certainly.
Congratulations, Coach. Congratulations.
Nice going, sir. Please give your name to Judy. We want to get your certificate, sir? Yes.
Yeah.
Do they have their names ready?
Yeah.
Okay, you guys ready? Ready, willing, enable? Thank you again. We are going to go into our regular meeting now. It's the green sheet, which is our agenda. And let's introduce our department heads this evening. To my left, we have Todd Zalinsik. He is our city engineer. To his right is Mark Teramina, our city planner. Then we also have Judy Preby, our legislative director. And they all do a great job for our city, and we appreciate it. And to our right is Paul Burnier. Paul's our city attorney. And to his left is Susan Nash, who is our city clerk. And they both do a fine job. And in our audience is Dave Varga, one of the mayor's top assistants, and does a super job. Thank you, Dave, for all you do. Appreciate it. Okay. With all that, council, we have new data on items 14 and 16. And now we will turn to audience communication. Anyone wishing to speak on the council, to the council, excuse me, of anything that wasn't on the green agenda, please approach now to the podium to my left or right. Give us your full name and address. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, council. City of Livonia. My name is Javion Johnson. I'm Chief of Staff for State Representative Jewel Jones. I've just come to show our support for the community and give a few legislative updates from the state. I have them jotted down, so bear with me. First, general info. In 1999, Senator John McCain introduced legislation to designate the month of May as National Military Month. So for any service members here, we do show our love and appreciation for you. Also, the president has issued a proclamation to Congress to adopt a resolution calling for Americans to recognize and honor U.S. servicemembers during this month. So, thank him for that. In Lansing, there's a lot going on. As you can see, I'm dressed down. Earlier today, I was on the front lines at a press conference to fight for better insurance rates. So, it's been a long day. But in Lansing, first HB 4320 and HB 4321, abortion method ban bills amend Michigan's current prohibition on partial birth abortion to ban dilation and evacuation, commonly referred to as DNE, which is considered the safest and most common early second trimester abortion method. Physicians who perform a DNE will be charged with a felony punishable by up to two years in prison. Next, we have HB 321, which would update the sentencing guidelines to add the criminal penalty proposed in HB 4320, which I just read. Next on the list is HB 4045, which increases county reward for information leading to arrest and convictions. The bill increases the maximum allowable reward a county may offer for information leading to the arrest and conviction of someone who has committed a crime within the county or escaped from the county jail. Next, HB 4510 creates exceptions from elevator safety rules under certain circumstances. The bill requires the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs to grant exceptions and variations from certain elevator safety measures if the safety measure was not required at the time the elevator was constructed, or at the time the application was made for an exception or variation.
Sir?
Yes.
Sir, I hate to interrupt you, but we only usually offer three minutes.
Oh, no problem at all.
No, you didn't know that, and that's fine. You've got about another 30 seconds. And I know you guys are doing a ton of work up there. We'd like to hear about each bill, but unfortunately, there's not that time. If you want to email us, or, you know, whatever, we're happy to hear that. We're happy to hear what you've said so far.
I only had two more left, and I was...
Two more? Okay. If you can do it in 30 seconds, that would be great.
So it's just SB 155 requires liquid nicotine containers to be sold in child-resistant packaging. In HB 4227, a committee on Michigan's mining future, the Mining Creates a New Act to Establish a Committee on Michigan's Mining Future, which is tasked with developing a list of recommendations on how to promote the mining and mineral industry within the state. So thank you for having me.
Thank you.
And feel free to contact our office if you need us. Thank you.
Certainly. Good luck to you. Yes, sir. Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Yes. Good evening. Hi.
Hi there. My name is Megan Zipka. I'm a resident of Livonia. I did speak with Judy this morning on the phone regarding, I just wasn't sure if it got added to the agenda.
Yeah, sure, the block. Or, yeah, you're at the end. You're our next item.
I can...
Yep, you can. Okay. All righty. Great. Okay, anybody else before we leave that? Okay, seeing no one, we have a communication from the Department of Finance dated April 26. Madam Clerk, if you could receive and file those financial statements for the city of Livonia for the month ending March 31 of this year. Okay. Council, item 1 through 10 is listed on our consent agenda. These items have been deemed not to be controversial in nature. Would someone like to move that? Council Vice President Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to offer an approving resolution for the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Support.
Council Vice President Jolly has offered. Councilwoman White has supported. Hearing and seeing no one else, if you take the roll, Madam Clerk, the vote.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. Council, we're under unfinished business. Number 11 is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Court of Ordinances. This petition was submitted by St. Jude Investment in request to vacate an existing public utility easement located on the southeast corner of Schoolcraft and Farmington Roads in the northwest section, quarter of the Section 27. Was there direction on this?
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I'd like to offer the first reading at this point.
Thank you. Councilman Jolly has offered first reading. You've heard first reading. Item 12, then, if there's no comments on item 11, we're moving on to 12. So don't be shy. Just raise your hand or whatever, and come on up to the podium. Item 12 is also under unfinished business. This first reading was given by Councilman Kritzman on February 25. Was there someone from the council that would like to give this second reading? Item 12.
Madam President?
Yes, please.
I'll offer a second reading.
Thank you very much. Councilman Jolly has offered second reading on the proposal. Is there any comment on item 12? Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman.
I appreciate Councilman Jolly offering second reading. I am not going to support it because I would like us to wait until we have all members of the council present for the second reading and the roll call vote.
All righty.
Is that a motion to table?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Did you want to?
Because if it is, I'll support that.
Okay. So, Councilwoman McIntyre has made a motion to table until all members are present. Council, is that correct? All members, all seven? And Councilwoman White has supported that. Was there further discussion? So we will take the tabling first.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. So there's no need to address the next one. Is there any other comments on item 12 before we leave it? Okay. Yes, go right ahead.
I just want to explain, and I appreciate Mr. Baki being here tonight. But when we are doing rezonings, especially ones like this where there's been significant comment, I prefer to wait until we have all members here. I just, I think it's better government, if you will. So, thank you.
Certainly. Thank you. Okay. Item 13, then, council, is a waiver petition from our Planning Commission submitted by Leo Sovee Building to develop a planned residential development under the single-family clustering option known as Compre Court, consisting of 16-site condominium lots on properties located on the west side of Farmington Road before Norfolk Avenue and Eight Mile. This is in the northwest section, north quarter section, northeast quarter section of Section 4.
Madam President? I think based on what we just did, it would be appropriate to table this as well until next time.
Okay. Do I have support on the table?
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman White. Is there any other comments? Is there anyone from the audience?
I have, Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I have a question.
Please.
Although now that I asked this question, it's probably relevant at this point. But I see Mr. Baki out there. Mind if I call him to the podium for a second?
No, not at all. Please, go ahead.
Mr. Baki, is there any problems that this causes you pushing this back?
I mean, not really.
I mean, obviously, you're always anxious to get going, but...
No, no. Yeah, we're anxious to see it going, but we're moving forward with our engineering and everything else.
Okay.
And we know all the neighbors are satisfied, so it's...
Fine. All right.
That's, you know, the motion of the council to have all the seven presidents. I mean, would it be the next meeting, I hope, so we can keep things moving? Okay.
As long as they're all here.
Yeah.
And Sam, the primary reason I wanted to, I think everyone's in favor of this. But as you know, Mr. Kritzman is a resident architect, and while we all do due diligence on site plans and waiver and everything else, I, on this issue, would like to do the vote and the discussion when he's here.
Sure. I understand.
But I think there's strong support for this. We appreciate the work that's been done with the neighbors. And this wasn't just to give you a procedural headache.
No, no problem.
But thank you for, thank you, Mr. Barr, for asking Mr. Baki to come to the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. If there's no other comments from the audience, would the clerk please take the roll on the table?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. Council, we're on item 14, which has new data. This is a request for an issue of a permit for firework display by the Great Lakes Fireworks to be held at the St. Mary's Church for the 11th Annual Michigan Fest on May 31 of this year with rain dates on June 1 and June 2 of this year. Is Fred here? Yeah, there's Fred. Okay.
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I'll offer an approving resolution.
Council Vice President Jolly has offered an approving. Was there support?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Barr. Is there discussion at this point, or would you prefer going to the position?
Well, Madam President, I'm sorry to speak over you.
No, please, go ahead.
It was not intended.
No, that's fine.
I'll just say that, you know, we're fortunate enough to have a great church community in the city here who I think offers a lot of benefits to the community at large. It's the summertime in the good old United States of America. I don't think fireworks hurt anybody. They might be an inconvenience for some for a short period of time. But coupled with the fact of many of our friends and neighbors will appreciate them, especially some of the neighbors around there as well, who we heard had previous parties and had friends and family over to experience them from their own house. I'm happy to support this tonight, and I'll thank Mr. Sakla and the St. Mary's community as well.
Thank you. We also, council, have the letter from the public schools, which we were waiting for when some of your folks were here the last time, to make sure it was okay with them. So go right ahead. Fred, go ahead.
All I'd say is, festival starts on May 30, this Thursday. We have New Classica and a number of orphaned children coming out and riding rides, and a nice presentation with that. Granite City's doing a beer tent on Thursday night. Middle Eastern music in the end. New Classica's a fun band. Friday, we have Audrey Ray. She's a country singer that just signed in Nashville, and she's starting out Friday night, and we're ending with a Middle Eastern orchestra. Saturday, typical fun, meet and greet with characters. Friday night, obviously, if you approve, will be the fireworks. Saturday, meet and greet with characters, Mickey Mouse, Elmo, oh, I forget the dog. What's the dog's name?
Clifford?
Clifford, yeah. And Saturday night, more entertainment. Sunday, Your Generation, your local dance troupe called Earth Angels, and Casino, and more Middle Eastern music, and great food. So please just come and have fun. We really are trying to be free parking first two hours from courtesy of our city forward. So please just come and enjoy.
Council Vice President Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Sakla, you mentioned that there will be characters available to meet?
Yes.
Is Haytham one of those characters who will be available to meet?
We got to decorate him a little bit more. He'll scare the kids at this point.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
And Fred, the fireworks, how long will those last, just in case?
They're 15 minutes. There are low, three and fours, four only in the finale. They'll go about 15 minutes, sometime right, sometime around 10, 10:15, depending on the color of the night, maybe even a little earlier. And that's, it's a short, beautiful display.
It is. I heard it from my house last year. Yes, sir. It was, it was very nice. Okay. Is there further comments from the audience or anyone else? If not, would the clerk take the vote?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations, and have a great time.
Thank you. And please, you all come on Thursday and help us open it up.
Oh, what time would that be, sir?
5:36, whatever's comfortable for you. But if you get there on 5:36, we'd love to have you. And I think it'll be, it's a kind of a unique, special night.
It's a week from this Thursday.
It's a week from this Thursday, correct. May 30 till June 2.
And it's not going to break?
It, it...
Yes, sir. Thank you. Bye-bye. Okay. Item 15, then, council, if there's no further comments, is a proposed special assessment street lighting project from an engineering department for Heritage Square Site Condomines located on Newbury Road East and south of Six Mile in the northwest quarter of Section 17. We held the public hearing on May the 1st.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
I'll move approval of the finding of necessity for this project.
Thank you. Councilwoman White has moved approval.
Second.
And supported by Council Vice President Jolly. Was there further discussion? Is there further discussion from the audience? Hearing and seeing them, would the clerk please call for the vote?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. Council, we're on item 16, which also has new data on it. It's a waiver petition from our Planning Commission. Petition 2018-120224 submitted by KAC Livonia LLC to construct and addition, increase the number of service bays, and renovate the exterior of existing automobile and truck repair facility known as Kirk's Auto Care located on the northeast quarter of section, of corner of Plymouth Road and Merriman Roads in the southwest quarter of Section 26. Do I have direction? Yes, Councilwoman McIntyre?
I would like to offer a tabling motion on this as well. Mr. Kritzman had a number of concerns about this, and I didn't know he wasn't going to be here tonight and didn't have an opportunity to talk to him.
Okay. Was there support for the tabling?
I'll support that.
Supported by Councilwoman White. Was there discussion?
I have a question, Madam President.
Please, go right ahead.
I do recall Mr. Kritzman asking this to be on the regular agenda. I'm wondering, and it may be appropriate to do exactly what's been proposed here with tabling this, but I also know that this has been through quite the, quite the rigmarole for the petitioner, and I want to be sensitive to that as well. Is there by chance another councilman, or maybe Mr. Teramina, that recalls what Mr. Kritzman's concern was? And if not, we may have to just go with this. But I'm wondering if any of your members...
The question was, is that what?
I believe...
What I recall, well, I think he wanted the building materials specified.
That is right.
And so what, there is new data provided this evening. And I think, as you can see, the petitioner has identified the two main materials that'll, exterior materials that will be on the building. He's also here to present samples of that material. So I think it was mostly just to confirm the color selection as well as the material selection.
Yeah, I'm torn on this, because, I mean, maybe it's not a big deal in the big scheme of things, but Councilwoman McIntyre is exactly right. He was the one that asked for this to go on the regular, and it would be nice if he were here. That being said, if I remember the nature of his comments correctly, I don't anticipate this being an issue for him. And I, but... It's probably, I guess I'd have a question for the petitioner. What, are you on any kind of timeline with this? I know it's a pain to have this pushed down the road a little bit, but in the big scheme of things, does it complicate anything for you?
I mean, obviously, you know, we would like to get started as soon as possible just because I know, you know, construction delays can happen, and, you know, we're trying to get this done in this, this building season. So obviously, you know, the sooner, the sooner the better, but I understand the council's concerns.
Well, I, I'm inclined to agree with Councilwoman McIntyre that probably is appropriate to get Mr. Kritzman to weigh in. And, you know, it's probably shame on us that, that we weren't more aware of the situation ahead of time to handle that here. It's nothing you've done wrong. You've done everything we've asked, but she's probably right. It'd probably be good to wait. I'm upset.
Okay. Thank you. Council Vice President Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. My comments are of a procedural matter. I'll note for the record that we are a deliberative body of seven members. Five are present here tonight. I went along with the previous two tablings as a professional courtesy, really. I do not think we should be waiting until a particular member is present to vote on a particular issue, although Mr. Kritzman's skill set is very valuable. I depend on it largely myself when considering type of measures such as this. Mr. Kritzman, had he wanted to, could have made a motion to remove this and the previous two items from the agenda if he was concerned about them. He did not make those motions. Therefore, I will be denying, well, I will be voting no towards denial. Thank you.
Was there any other comments? Hearing and seeing none, anyone from the audience? Madam Clerk, would you take the vote?
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I make one last comment?
Just one second.
Did I get that in time?
Yeah, you did.
I'm strong with it. I, I understand completely where Mr. Jolly's coming from. I do think this is different from the previous two, because this is a situation where we're showing deference to the person, the specific person who asked us to be on the regular. And, yeah, that's it. I appreciate what he's saying. And I frankly concur with him on the first two, but I do think this one's different.
Okay. If there's no one else, will the clerk take the roll?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
No.
President Toy?
No. Motion passes. Okay. We'll see you again, and we'll try and get you on as quick as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Certainly. Thank you. I think we better, to Madam Clerk, receive and file the communication received from the Plymouth Road Development Authority dated May 3, if you would, please. Okay. Thank you. All righty. Moving right along. We are on number 17 under new business, which is a proposed lease amendment to 123NET. This brought to us from the Division of Police. With 123NET Inc. of Southfield, Michigan to occupy a portion of the Livonia Police Communications Tower to permit use of the tower for a licensing fee of 500 per month with a 15% increase every five years with a provision for installation of an additional attenda, attendance at the rate, excuse me, of 300 each per month with addition consideration of 123NET to install point-to-point connection bridges for additional sites at an approximate value of 1,800 per month. Council, your pleasure.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll move approval.
Moved by Councilwoman White? Is, was there support on 17?
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman McIntyre. Was there discussion, council? Hearing and seeing none, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one from the audience, would the clerk please take the vote?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. Item 18 is acceptance of a grant easement brought to us from the Department of Law from the city of Livonia to Consumers Energy for six wide utility easements in connection with the installation and maintenance of a gas line and a portion of Civic Center to service T-Mobile and AT&amp;T generators at the base of the Livonia Police Department Communications Towers. Council, direction.
I'll move approval, Madam Chair.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman White, supported by Councilwoman McIntyre. Was there discussion? Hearing and seeing no one, anybody from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one from the audience, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion to suspend the rules for the accent, moved by Councilwoman McIntyre, supported by Councilmember Barr. This, could you take the vote on that, Madam Clerk? I think we can show five, but just in case.
You want a vote or show five?
Oh, let's show five then, unless there's objection. I hear none. This is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. Megan, are you still here? You sure are. Come on up to the mic. For, for her family's 15th Annual Memorial Day Weekend Gathering with live music on Sunday, May the 26th, from 7 to 11 at 19467 Fitzgerald. The story behind this is, it's a next item, council, just real quick, is that they didn't realize because of the noise consideration that they would have to come to council for approval. So we didn't want them not to have their family, annual family get-togethers. So we did put on as a next for your consideration. Was there a direction?
Madam President?
Yes.
I move to approve.
Support.
Moved by Council Vice President Jolly to approve, supported by Councilwoman White. Is there discussion from the council?
I have a quick question.
We could go to the petitioner. Yes.
Can somebody refresh me on what our, what our rules is? What prompts this type of thing? Because it's until 11 o'clock that people can be doing live music, isn't it? Doesn't our ordinance allow till 11:00 without us doing anything? I guess through the cheer to Paul, I just need a refresher on what our rules are.
It does, but there are decibel levels that may be exceeded by the band.
Okay. And, ma'am, have you talked to your neighbors about this?
Yes. We've been residents of Livonia for eight years, just moved last month. But yes, they have been informed and invited. And I was a little unclear of those instructions either, as well. Hence the calls, multiple calls this morning, so, and why I'm here today. So...
I just have to make a comment, too. This has to be one of the longest words I've ever seen that waits till the eighth letter for a vol. Last name. That's something. Anyway, I've got no problem with it. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Barr.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure. Go right ahead.
So is this something I should do next year as well? Obviously, much further ahead of time, but...
Yes.
Up here before...
So you guess every year when the block parties come in and things like that, if, you know, it's, it's wise to do, yes.
Okay. I'll do. Thank you.
Hold on one second. Council Vice President Jolly has a...
Well, I was just going to make light of the situation, but you've been doing this for eight years in Livonia?
We have, my parents in Novi have for 14 years. I've lived in Livonia for eight years.
So this is the first year in Livonia?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Well, I wish you luck and...
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. Okay. Is there any other comments? Anyone from the audience wishing to comment on this? Please don't wreck our parade. No. Okay. Councilwoman, or, well, you were a councilwoman. Clerk Nash?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Thank you very much, Megan, for coming and waiting.
Thank you.
Yes. We go back to audience communication. Anyone wishing to address the council in any manner, if you'd approach the podium to my left or right, be happy to hear your comments. If not, I need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Vice President Jolly and supported by?
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman McIntyre. I think we can show five. We are a jerk.